Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It is Wednesday, June 7th, 2023, and this is a regular session of the City of Bloomington Common Council to be followed by Committee of the Whole. If we would, let's start with a roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
Do we have Pete Smith?
We switched.
Nope, okay. Sorry about that. Scambaluri?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Sims? I'll fix it later, I'm sorry.
Here.
Okay. Smith?
Here.
And Volin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue with our land and labor acknowledgement. For the City of Bloomington, we recognize that the City of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Continuing with an agenda summation for this evening's meeting, we'll begin this evening with an approval of minutes. We have one set from the regular session on June 1st, 2022, to approve. We'll then move into reports, beginning with reports from individual council members. We then have multiple reports from the mayor and city offices, including a report on the sibling city relationship with Palo Alto, California, the Human Rights Commission Annual Award Presentation, and the Pavement and Sidewalk-Side Path Conditions Report. We'll then hear any reports from council committees, and we'll then come to our first of two periods of public comment. We then move into appointments to boards and commissions, and we'll then take up legislation for second readings and resolutions. Included there is Resolution 23-09, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, endorsing and urging passage of Indiana legislation establishing a driver card for undocumented Indiana residents. We then move into legislation for first readings. Included there are Ordinance 2312 and ordinance to amend Ordinance 22-26, previously amended by Ordinance 22-40, which fixed the salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and AFSMI employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana, for the year 2023, to reflect updates needing implementation in 2023. We also have Ordinance 2313 and ordinance to amend Ordinance 22-25, which fixed the salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the City of Bloomington, Indiana, for the year 2023, to reflect increases in compensation to certain firefighters. We'll then move into our second of two periods of public comment. We'll take up matters of council schedule, and then we'll adjourn. And this meeting will be followed by a Committee of the Whole meeting to begin at 8:00 PM, chaired by Councilmember Volin. So with that, let's go to approval of minutes.
President, I move the approval of the council minutes for June 1st, 2022, regular session.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, everyone. So, let's move into reports, beginning with reports from council members. I'll start on my far left, Councilmember Volin.
Do you have a minute to prepare something?
Certainly.
I'd rather, thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I have no report, thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg?
No report.
Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report, thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Yes, I need a few minutes, though.
Very well.
I'm just joking.
Okay.
Now, I really don't have a report, but what I really want to do is acknowledge the group of folks that we have here this evening, and particularly our young people. How many of you out here would like to someday sit in this seat that I'm in? Put your hand up.
Is the microphone on?
Thank you. But I think that's what's important. What we do civically is important, and I think you start young to understand some of the nuances and how things actually work. So, I just really wanted to acknowledge that everyone's here, and good to see you tonight, and hopefully it won't be a year before we see you all again. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thanks.
Thank you, and I have no report this evening. Let's move -- oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Volin, sorry.
It won't take too long. I do want to call attention to an article in the Northeast Indiana Times that came out just a couple of weeks ago. The headline is "Northwest Indiana Universities Are Headed For A Cliff." It has been a topic of conversation in this city about the potential for declining enrollment to affect the housing market. And I've argued for a while that I'm not sure that, while that may be true in many parts of the country, it's not necessarily true here. One of the things that the article talks about is how St. Joseph's College in Rensselaer, which had 1,100 students, closed in 2017 due to declining enrollment. And the article pointed out, quote, "That however, all of Northwest Indiana's universities are either regional campuses or liberal arts colleges, and both types are expected to bear the brunt of this so-called enrollment collapse." But one point in the article that I wanted to point out is that they specifically call into question cities like this one, and I'm trying to find the quote here. "Many of these experts predict that prominent elite institutions and flagship universities, such as the University of Notre Dame or Indiana University Bloomington, will weather the storm because of recognizable brands and reputations. They might even see enrollment increases." So, I'd like to call people's attention to this article and to point out that we cannot and should not rely on the possibility that enrollment will decrease at the IU Bloomington campus because it is perhaps the single most significant institution in the state. Most, if not everybody, would like to be able to go to IU if they have a choice of colleges due to the flagship campus, and that means we must pay attention to how we accommodate the people coming to Bloomington to attend school. That means we need to be thinking more about housing. We think, I believe, that we think that IU should also be thinking more about housing. They should be contributing to it, they should be building more if they're going to let their enrollment grow. But let's not have any illusions about the idea that somehow IU is going to shrink anytime soon. Many smaller schools are going to do it before this one does. And I want, once again, to remind people that there's never been a decade when the City of Bloomington, the County of Monroe, or the enrollment at IU has shrunk in 200 years, except for the 2020 census, where there was a slight drop due to the fact that the census didn't count any dorm students who were there two weeks prior to the pandemic shutting down schools across the country. Were it not for that, the City of Bloomington would have seen an increase in growth that decade as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move into reports from the mayor and city offices, beginning with a report on our sibling city relationship with Palo Alto, California. I believe we have Ms. Goodman with us tonight? And Ms. Vinker is with us as well, or?
Yes, she's here virtually. Good evening, councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Kaissa Goodman, and I'm the Public Engagement Director here at the City of Bloomington. I'm here tonight regarding the annual report for the City of Bloomington's sibling cities' relationship with the City of Palo Alto, California. Presenting tonight's report is Vicki Vinker, founder and CEO of Sibling Cities USA, and she and I will both be available following the report to answer any questions. Vicki, thank you so much for joining us tonight on Zoom, and welcome.
Thank you, and thanks to all of you for having me and having me back. I had the pleasure of addressing you on December 1st of 2021, when I was asking for your support of our effort to knit this city, or this country, back together, two cities at a time. Now, 18 months later, I'm here, as requested, to give you our annual report and tell you how it's gone, and I'm here to tell you it went well. I'm coming to you tonight from Palo Alto. Previously, I was coming to you from Bloomington. I think many of you know that I was born in Indiana, I'm an IU grad, and I have my heart in both places. So this has been really just amazing to see the residents of the two cities get to know each other and respect each other and enjoy each other the way I do. So getting to our slides, if you could go to the next slide, please. So after you approved entering the sibling city relationship, and the Palo Alto City Council did the same, this first-ever sibling city agreement was entered in February of 2022. Next slide. Oh, and by the way, in January, I was elected to the Palo Alto City Council, and so I understand the need for brevity, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but I will be in Bloomington at the end of the month. Anyone who wants to have a longer conversation, I would welcome that. Anyway, we use three pillars of connection to build our relationship. Community groups get together, business groups get together, the BEDC and the Chambers of Commerce have connected, and then we also engage in civil discourse, and we're launching that this year. Next slide. We have had bipartisan support at the national level for this effort. We've had both members of Congress from our district out in Palo Alto and your former member, Trey Hollingsworth, support this. Also on the slide, we have David Matthews, who was Cabinet Secretary for President Ford, and we even have the United States Conference of Mayors, pretty interested in what we're doing and watching this effort, and hopefully they'll help us find more sibling city pairs. Next slide. So this past year, I've had the pleasure of working with Karen Howe Fernandez in Bloomington to coordinate these efforts, and Andy Reed in Palo Alto. She's also associated with a nonprofit called Neighbors Abroad that looks after all of our sister cities in Palo Alto, so we coordinate those together. Next slide. Just a quick overview, which we could not fit on one slide, just the highlights. So as I mentioned, we had our virtual kickoff in February of last year. Then there was a joint essay contest with students in both cities writing about civic courage, which was wonderful. In May, there were a group of Palo Altons that came to Bloomington to visit. Also in May, the City of Bloomington awarded us an Innovation Award, which we're pretty proud of and excited and honored by. Next slide. And then in August, out in front of City Hall in Palo Alto, if you're ever out here, please come visit, there's a sign with little paddles pointing to all eight of our sister cities internationally, and now there's one pointing to Bloomington. And there was an unveiling ceremony, Karen Howe Fernandez came out and spoke, and we were pretty excited about that. In November, a group of Palo, about 17 Bloomingtonians came to Palo Alto, and then, fast forward to this past February, we launched our civil discourse. All right, let me try to speed it up a little. Next slide. So this was the kickoff event, you can see more on our website about that. Let's go to the next slide. Here are some highlights, and by the way, this annual report deck is on our website. These are some of the great things that people saw when they visited Bloomington, Dimension Mill, City Hall, the IU Cook Center for the Arts. Next slide. Teachers Warehouse, Brown County, and then there were individual connections such as dinner with the Rotary Clubs. Next slide. Turnabout fair play, when people came to Palo Alto, there was a welcome lunch. We had a climate summit, where from Washington DC, the Assistant U.S. Secretary of the Department of Energy came out to talk about how cities can get engaged in climate efforts. We had 65 people come to our civil discourse planning meeting. We had an economic roundtable. Next slide. And the IU Alumni Association put on a lovely reception in Palo Alto, right before a Jacob School String Quartet performed a free concert that brought the house down. We did tours of Stanford, downtown, and others, and there was another Rotary Dinner. So it was wonderful. Next slide. This past February brought Tom Erlich, who's beloved in both towns, former president of IU, former dean of the Stanford Law School, who spoke to us about launching this civil discourse effort, as did Joan Blades, who has founded a national living room conversation platform to facilitate civil discourse. And so we are now going to be living into that in the next few months. Next slide. And here's the impact that your residents and ours have had. There were six high school essay contest winners. We've had 10 joint steering committee meetings, meaning leaders from both cities getting together to talk about this. We've had 26 delegates visit back and forth through the Rotary Clubs. 36 organizations have been connected. 65 people attended the civil discourse planning meeting. 150 attended our virtual kickoff. We've had 200 attend our climate summit. We had 200 cans of food and $1,000 raised by Kiwanis for a fundraiser, and we've had more than 200 people just participate generally in other ways. So we think that's a pretty good impact for our first year. Next slide. So looking forward, we'll continue with the three pillars. Next slide. Can we move on? And in fact, the very next thing that's happening is this Friday, three students from Bloomington, as well as students from Palo Alto, are traveling to Enschede, the Netherlands. That was the award for the essay contest, a free trip, because Enschede is a sister city of Palo Alto, and so the Palo Alto nonprofit that sponsored the contest is paying for that trip, and we hope that that will get our younger generation. I heard Councilmember Sims talk about the younger generation there tonight. We'd really like to connect our students together across the miles as well, and this is one way we're doing it, as they have this trip. Next slide. So what's next? In the fall, and we would love for any and all of your people in your network, be they organizations or private citizens, participate in our town halls. We're going to do regional divides in August, we're going to do climate in October, we're going to do race and belonging in November, and we're very excited about this. And we're going to learn from each one, how to do better the next time, and we welcome all feedback on that. Next slide. So if you want to get involved, many of you already are or have been, but we welcome all. So email me, talk to Kaissa, sign up on our website. I'm very excited, we just launched today our civil discourse page on our website that'll tell you how to do this, and our annual report, as I mentioned, is on our website. Anyway, it's been a terrific year. I want to thank you for your support and for your taking this leap of faith in this effort to make our America the one that we want to live in. So thank you for having me.
Thank you. And Ms. Goodman, did you have anything to add?
I don't have any further comments, but if there are any questions, Vicki and I can field those.
Okay, and I know that we also have your slide deck and your contact information, so we can reach out individually if we have questions as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anything from councils? Seeing none? Okay, thank you so much for your report. Thank you, Ms. Vinker.
Thank you.
So, let's continue on with a Human Rights Commission Annual Award Presentation. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Ryan Shaddy, the City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission Chair, and first, Happy Pride Month. I stand here before you today as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, and today our community is now under unrelenting attacks from those who do wish to do us harm. As individuals, we have the right to live in peace and without fear of intimidation or death from these individuals. Bloomington, as the welcoming community that it is, still has work to do in order to achieve harmony for those in this community. This is why the Bloomington Human Rights Commission exists, to help bring unity to our community as a whole. This is why we have important work to do, or to keep doing, as elected leaders and as a commission. Most importantly, this work would not be possible without the individual members and groups who make a difference in our community, and it is why it is my distinct honor to be able to present an award with so much significance each year. The dark corners of the internet, along with easy access to social media, allow those seeking to find any crumb of their belief system to be true a space to do so. With that comes the reality that even if a fraction of what someone believes is true, they can easily turn it into hate. This year, the two recipients of the 2023 City of Bloomington Human Rights Award face these realities every day. Our city's most vulnerable individuals, ranging from our schoolchildren at MCCSC, to those sleeping on our streets, are the subject of ridicule and bullying unlike some of us can ever believe. Yet, the award winners this evening persist through all that they face, whether at Beacon or within the school system. We had six stellar nominations for this award this year, and our commission decided to award two, one to an individual and one to an institutional group. It is a privilege to stand here before you to present both Reverend Forrest Gilmore and the Monroe County Community School Corporation Equity Ambassadors as the recipients of this year's award. I will first introduce you to Reverend Gilmore and present him with his award, and then I will present the Equity Ambassadors with theirs. Reverend Gilmore was nominated by Judy Owens. His nominator stated as the reason for his nomination, it is because of his dedicated work in serving and empowering Bloomington's homeless and at-risk population. Judy carries on by saying, "His housing-first philosophy has aided in grounding individuals and families suffering from life upheavals, helping them onto a path of housing, employment, and self-sufficiency." Not only that, it is said that Forrest has a gentle old soul and deserves recognition for his efforts. And finally, and most commendable, under his direction, Beacon has expanded to include six major programs in the past 13 years. And on top of that, it is with dignity and compassion, they all serve almost 1 million meals, provided nearly 100,000 nights of shelter, and helped house or prevent homelessness for just shy of 10,000 people. Needless to say, the people of Bloomington and beyond have a lot to be thankful for Reverend Gilmore. People are fed, people have shelter when needed, people have some of their basic, very basic needs taken care of because of his life work. We can all be thankful that this person calls Bloomington home. With pride, enthusiasm, and without reservation, I am humbled and honored to award the 2023 City of Bloomington Human Rights Individual Award to Reverend Forrest Gilmore. Thank you, Forrest. Come on up. Thank you, Forrest, for your tireless dedication to Bloomington and every community in which Up next, we will do our Institution Award. Under the tutelage of Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Marke Winston, this group of high school students from across Bloomington has worked tirelessly with MCCS administration to co-create a much-needed racial equity policy for our school corporation. The nominator, Kirsten Milks, mentions that this group is developing ideas and terms that are to be included in a school board policy aimed at combating racism in our public schools. The student equity ambassadors met last fall for 15 hours, trained teachers, facilitated discussion groups with 6th through 8th graders, and spoke at school board meetings to educate the board about the policy and its development. Milks remarks, "I was deeply impressed with how students were able to facilitate discussions and learning experiences surrounding key terms in educational equity, as well as how passionately they shared their experiences and motivations for engaging in the work with a packed classroom of teachers." Furthermore, many of these individuals have also expressed to her that they have a deep desire to continue their involvement in this work. Milks sums up quite succinctly with the important work that they will be carrying out in future terms. This is a worthy group of young people. Well, young people that are here today, many of which Councilmember Sims pointed out, as you can see by the example of Reverend Gilmore, you have a lot more years ahead of you, and I know you can achieve and do great things, along with bringing about change in society. You have already started that. Glad that made you laugh, Reverend Gilmore. And that change begins right here with the work that you are doing in our schools in the community you live. We are so very proud of your important work, and I could not be more excited and pleased to present this great group, the future of our community, with the 2023 City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission Institution Award. Thank you for the work you have begun, and we look forward to seeing what you can accomplish in the future. And any and all of you that want to come up here and get your picture taken, go right ahead. Congratulations. Thank you, Councilmembers, for your time this evening, and congratulations to both Reverend Gilmore and the MCCSC Equity Ambassadors.
Thank you.
It's not enough, Steve. It's not enough. It's not enough.
For those who of us who are joining us who are on the balcony level, we have some seats that are freeing up down on this level if you'd like to come downstairs. You're welcome to, or you're welcome to stay upstairs. So, but, and on behalf of the council, congratulations to Reverend Gilmore and to the Monroe County Community Schools Equity Ambassadors. Thank you for being a source of good news, so. But with that, we move to Pavement and Sidewalk-Side Path Conditions Report. Mr. Wasen, good to see you.
Good evening, members of the council. I think I wish I would have probably gone first tonight before we gave awards to children in force, but congratulations to all of them. I'll try to follow that up with some really great information on streets, sidewalks, side paths, and curb ramp assessment information.
Mr. Wasen, I'm going to interrupt you for just a minute. We are five minutes away from the deadline. We allow 20 minutes for this particular section of the meeting, and I'm assuming we would like to extend that. Is there a motion from the council? May I have a motion to extend this time?
We'll extend.
Much time? Mr. Wasen, how much time?
I think I could probably get it done in 10 minutes, but I'm sure you all will have some questions.
Let's extend by 10 minutes, then.
Let's say?
10 total.
Okay. Let's extend, we were originally to end at 7:05, let's plan to extend till 7:15. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, thank you. Mr. Wasen, please go ahead.
Good evening. Again, Adam Wasen, Public Works Director. So we're talking about a field--
Can you pull your mic closer? Thank you.
We're talking about a field reconnaissance data collection project that we contracted for in 2021 and had completed in 2022. The first year that we'd ever done a data analysis like this was 2017, which was a big first. Prior to using this more technological way of analyzing our streets, sidewalks, and curb ramps, that was all done manually in the past. So we literally had city staff drive, try to analyze, and give a very subjective review and rating for all of our city streets. IMS, our contracted vendor for this work, utilized a state-of-the-art road surface tester, RST, and throughout the city to capture continuous, high-resolution pavement cracking, rutting, and roughness data on our 237 centerline miles of our asphalt roadways. Streets, as we all know, support more than just the traditional single automobile. It's for fire engines, ambulances, police cars, transit buses, bicyclists, sanitation trucks, snowplows, delivery trucks, et cetera. Many of our streets have bike lanes marked specifically for bicyclists and are located within the street that are separate from side paths. Prior to pavement maintenance projects that require milling, all curb ramps must be upgraded to meet current ADA standards and requirements. As you can see, we have 237-- As you can see, we have 237 centerline miles of streets, 39 of which contain bike lanes. We also maintain nearly 23 miles of side paths, which tend to be asphalt and usually at least twice the width of a traditional sidewalk. Beyond that, we have 251 miles of sidewalks throughout the city. To put it in a little bit different perspective, when you think of it from a square footage, we have over 6.6 billion square feet of streets, 1.8 billion feet of bicycle lanes, square feet, 638 million square feet of sidewalks and over 7 billion square feet of sidewalks. As previously mentioned, every square foot of road surface in the community was measured and analyzed on a 1 to 100 ranking scale. While I'm sure the red poor rating on this chart is going to be the most noticeable visual in the chart, some perspective needs to be taken into account of where and why this figure is so high. Overall, 37% of the city's road network is in a poor or very poor condition, but 53% are in marginal, fair, good, very good, and excellent conditions. The next slide will also provide some additional information and perspective on which types of roadway classifications fall into the various condition categories. And this is where the perspective is really important. Overall, our network is at a 52 PCI. Our arterial roads, the roads that have the heaviest traffic volumes, are at a 56 PCI. Our collector roads, which are the next most high-volume roads, are at a 54 PCI. And our residential roads, which receive the lowest amounts of traffic, are at an overall 49 PCI. So, again, the most highly-traveled roads are in the best condition in the community. The most low-volume roads tend to have the poor or very poor rating. Next. Overall, our current annual budget of roughly $700,000 dedicated to pavement preservation will not be enough to sustain the current 52 PCI or move it up. To keep a steady-state PCI, we need to increase that funding to about $1.1 million per year. To get to a PCI average across the entire city of 55, that would require a $1.4 million annual allocation for budgeting. But there is some other good news here. Between the community crossings grant program that we have leveraged since 2019 and with some additional requests for one-time spending, we are hoping to be able to meet at least that $1.4 million annual investment, if not more. And you'll hear more to come about that in our 2024 budget requests this coming August. Next slide. Actually, due to time, let's skip that one. Let's get to sidewalks. So, for sidewalks, we have 251.3 miles of sidewalks citywide. 91% are concrete, 1% are brick or stamped brick, and about 8% are asphalt. The good news here is the condition of our sidewalks community-wide are in good condition, and I think that's something we should all be proud of. Between the increased investments in sidewalk repairs and maintenance year-over-year that you all, as your role as the budget approval agents body for the city, and the budgets that were approved for the Street Division of the Department of Public Works and the private investments of property owners, the results are noticeable and significant. As you are all aware, per city code, sidewalk maintenance and repair, sidewalk maintenance and repair, including snow control, are the responsibility of the adjoining property owner. However, this city will implement repairs through our sidewalk grinding program, which has eliminated over 8,000 trip hazards citywide since 2017 or where a city-owned street tree has caused the damage. Next. And I know this graphic is kind of hard to see, but this is the type of interactive map that has been uploaded to the city's website through the Be Clear portal, which allows anyone to scroll and find the conditions of each section of sidewalk throughout the city. For side paths, we have 22.9 lane miles of public side paths. These are adjacent to the road right-of-way and, again, traditionally more than double the width of a traditional sidewalk. The average overall condition is an 81 PCI for our side paths, and 2023 will result in some pretty significant investments in maintenance as we'll continue to try to do in subsequent years as well. So, if you can just go to two slides. Yeah, so here's the map of where we have side paths throughout the city and then a chart showing that, overall, we're in a very good and excellent condition with at least 81 PCI for our pavement of side paths. Next up, the study also looked at ADA ramps throughout the community, a very important mobility investment for the community. Next. So, with ADA ramps, the time at which an ADA ramp is installed... Let me step back. So, when ADA ramps are installed, there's a current standard in any given year at which those ADA ramps need to be installed. So, as an example, a new ramp that we would have installed in 2013 would have met all the ADA requirements at that time. However, with upgrades and updates to the federal code on how ADA ramps should be installed, that 2013 ramp, if we were paving a street now, would need to be removed and replaced. So, a 2013 ramp that would install would be at the two ADA deficiency level. And then ones before 2013 would be at the three or more ADA deficiencies. I know that's a little confusing, but when you think of it from a poor, fair, and good perspective, there's some other data that should be taken into account. The next is a visual of what would constitute poor on the left side, fair in the middle, and good on the right. As you can see on the left, the poor one, it's got a deteriorating curb ramp with no delineators like as shown in the good. For the fair, that's going to be probably a 2010 standard. You see some cracking, though, and the standard back then was just to do... to have some indentations into the concrete. The good is going to have your... I can't think of the name of them right now, but they look like the little Lego pieces. Michael, are you still here? I don't see him. But the maroon ramps are going to be what is going to be the current standard, which is going to meet good. So, if we go to the next slide, and this is where you have the deficiencies compared to the actual condition. Overall, almost 5,700 of our ramps in the city are in good condition. That's a really good figure. We do have a few in the poor condition. And then the other noticeable thing here is we have 885 locations where we have the opportunity to install a ramp that does not exist today. And again, very important information to have as we look at future investments. As far as next steps, as I mentioned, there's a web link here at the bottom that is going to take anyone to our interactive map through the city's GIS system. If you haven't explored our new GIS system, very big kudos to the ITS staff. This has been a really big upgrade. And so, anyone can go in and look at pavement condition, sidewalk, side path, or ADA ramp conditions throughout the entire city. As the Public Works Director and who works very closely with the Street Division, this data is invaluable in how we make our decisions. It's invaluable in how we make our decisions on where to invest for pavement maintenance, where to invest for sidewalk maintenance, and how to increase the overall mobility of the community. So, I know that's a lot of information in a very short amount of time. Happy to meet with any of the council members individually and go over this data and take a deep dive, but I'd also be happy to try to answer any questions you have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wasen. We have a couple of minutes left for questions. Councilmember Rallo.
Thanks for the report. Do you have the street condition data, poor, marginal, fair, good, excellent, for 2017? Okay. And in that bar graph form, so we could compare?
Yes, I had to... When I ran through my presentation earlier, I was at least 15 minutes, so I had to cut some slides. But we do have that 2017 to 2022 data. 2017, we were at about a 57 overall PCI. So, that's where you can see, if you don't make those increased investments year-over-year, your PCI is going to go down.
Okay. Could you send that data to council...
It's actually in your first slide packet that you received tonight, but we can also...
Okay. I'll look for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
Without getting too deep into it, what is the administration proposing as a way to fund these needed upgrades?
Well, as I mentioned, we're continually going after additional community crossing grants. That can be up to $1 million per community per year. We average about $300,000 to $400,000 per year. Next year, in our budget, we're going to ask for a full million.
From whom?
What's that?
Who is that from?
NDOT. That's the NDOT Community Crossings Grant. We're also looking at the federal infrastructure bills and seeing if there's opportunities there. I believe also in our 2024 budget request, you're going to hear some one-time expenditure requests from the combination of creed funds that went back to the general... the community revitalization and enhancement district funds that went back to the general fund, as well as possibly some of the ARPA funds to supplement some of those investments that need to be increased.
If they're being spent in the creed, then maybe okay, but...
Yes, I'm very much aware.
That will be okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Additional questions for Mr. Wasen? Okay, and may we be in touch with you with additional questions if something come up later?
100%, anytime.
Great. Thank you so much. With that, we'll come to reports from council committees. Are there any that need to come before this group? Okay, seeing none, I will take this opportunity to make one appointment. Councilmember Rallo is stepping away from the Special Committee on Council Processes. I'd like to appoint Councilmember Volan to that committee and to thank him for his willingness to serve. So, that brings us to our first of two periods of public comment. This period of public comment will be for items not on the agenda this evening. So, this will be a general period of public comment. It'll be one of two. May I have a show of hands here in chambers of those who would like to offer public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, and Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, of course. If there are members of the public that wish to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You can find that feature in your control bar by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any hands here for this general period of public comment. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing any?
I am not, no.
Okay. We'll give it just another minute? Not a minute, a few moments. Okay. Okay, and again, there will be a second period of public comment later on in this meeting. But that brings us to appointments to boards and commissions. Interview Team A, do you have any appointments to make?
Madam Chair, with regard to the Board of Quality Housing Appeals, I move that we appoint Dylan Shute to Seat C1.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you to Mr. Shute for his willingness to serve. Others from the interview committee? Okay, Interview Committee B, are there any appointments? Or Interview Committee C? Seeing none, I will take this opportunity. I'd like to request the council's action to make two appointments. I was... All of you received an email about this, oh, gosh, several days ago, regarding appointments from council to the Monroe County Justice Finance Advisory Committee, or JFAC. I would like to appoint Isabel Piedmont Smith to that post. Mr. Lucas, do you recommend we take these separately or take them both together?
I would do them separately.
Let's do them separately. So, may I... If council is agreeable, may I have a motion to approve the appointment of Isabel Piedmont Smith to the Monroe County Justice Finance Advisory Committee?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes, and we appreciate her willingness to serve on the Justice Finance Advisory Committee. The next is the College Walnut Corridor Study Steering Committee. I also sent out a request for those who may be interested in serving, and I have a willingness to serve from Councilmember Sims, and I appreciate that. May I have a motion, if council is agreeable, to appointing him to that?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Sims, for your willingness to serve. So, anything else on appointments to boards and commissions? Okay, that takes us to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2309 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2309, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Bloomington, Indiana, endorsing and urging passage of Indiana legislation establishing a driver card for undocumented Indiana residents. The synopsis is as follows. "This resolution expresses the Common Council's support for passage of state legislation creating a lawful driving credential available to undocumented residents who meet appropriate prerequisites. Instructs the city clerk to send the resolution upon passage to the State House and urges residents to express their own support to state legislators."
Thank you.
I move that Resolution 2309 be adopted.
Thank you. So, and who do we have presenting? I believe we have members of the administration presenting this evening. Welcome. So, if you would, please confirm your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Josefa Madrigal.
Welcome, and please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Josefa Madrigal. I'm the Chief of Staff for the City of Bloomington, Office of the Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity and allowing us to be here to make this presentation to you of the Resolution 2309 of a driver's card for undocumented Indiana residents. We feel strongly about this resolution as it benefits our community as a whole. May I say the introduction in Spanish, because I know there's some Spanish-speaking members in our audience? Hola buenas tardes y buenas noches y gracias por estar aquí. Estamos haciendo esta... Estoy haciendo una introducción al consejo de la ciudad de Bloomington, agradeciéndoles a ellos por esta oportunidad que nos están dando, pero también yo personalmente quiero agradecerles a ustedes por estar aquí. Yo sé que es un día ocupado para todos nosotros y viajamos de muy lejos algunos de nosotros. Entonces gracias nuevamente por estar aquí. Voy a seguir con la presentación y después de la presentación podemos hablar con ustedes, ya sea yo o representante de La Voz Unida. Gracias. I want to mention that Resolution 2309, or the eventual implementation of a driver's card, is not expected to impose cost on the City of Bloomington. I do want to share that the Office of the Mayor received a packet of information about this supporting a resolution for Indiana, undocumented Indiana residents by La Voz Unida. La Voz Unida is a nonprofit agency based out of Plymouth, Indiana, and a representative, Ed Rodriguez, is here, as well as members. I also want to acknowledge, and I did tell them, there's also several of our community members who are here, who are also in support of this resolution. So, moving further, the Office of the Mayor supports and endorses this resolution. In last week's press release, the Mayor, Mayor Hamilton, mentioned "The passage of Senate Bill 248 will be good for communities, good for the economy, and good for the dignity of our friends and neighbors." I want to share information of what this driving card does when a person has it. They can safely engage in basic essential needs. They can buy groceries or go into food pantries, and I can tell you that food pantries is one of the aspects that I'm familiar with when I encounter most of our community members locally here in Bloomington. This will enable them to go to work and from work, also transferring their children, transporting their children to and from school if the bus is not able to come pick them up. They can access health care, basic health care, and then it will boost state revenue through fees associated with obtaining the credentials. I do want to mention what this driver card will not be able to do, and that is they will not have access to vote. They won't have access to federal assistance and/or claim. They will not be able to claim citizenship or lawful residence. I do want you to know that the currently 20 U.S. states enacted similar legislation offering driving cards to undocumented residents. In Indiana, at least 13 other municipalities have passed similar resolutions in support of driving cards. similar resolutions in support of drivers, driving cards for undocumented Indiana residents. Our community contributes, our community contributes to countless way, in countless ways, and one of them, there's several, but one of them that comes to mind is the fact that they do pay taxes and they file taxes. And this is just from previous employment that I've had in working with the Latino community, our local Latino community here in Bloomington, calling, scheduling appointments to file taxes, and again, we all pay taxes. The driver's card will ensure that all drivers in Indiana roads are trained, so they will be able to take this written test at the BMV, pass it, and then take this driving test at the BMV, pass it, and then be issued a driver's, driver's card. They will be certified, as I mentioned, just going through the training, taking, doing, going through all the prerequisites as needed to have and obtain a driver's card. And also, once you have a driver card, they will be able to access car insurance. So, they will be able to actually have it, like we want it, we just can't get that at the moment. And in turn, it will reduce accidents, reduce premiums paid by licensed drivers, and promote positive relations with law enforcement by reducing the fear of traffic stops and reducing leaving the scene of an accident. I do want to mention that, again, our community, La Voz Unida representative is, organization, entity is here. Our representative, Ed Rodriguez, is here, if you have any other follow-up questions. But I also want to acknowledge that our local community here in Bloomington are also here as I see them and I recognize them. And so, to conclude, I want to sincerely thank you for this opportunity to he, hear us out, so that you can see that we do have support, that this is something that we, our community, wants and is seeking and is asking of your endorsement for this Resolution 2309. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Madrigal. Appreciate it. So, let's come to council for any questions. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you for your presentation. So, I noticed that a similar bill's passed the Senate, and could you talk, tell us a little bit about what process lies ahead? In other words, if this, if, if the House bill passes-
Could I have Mr. Rodriguez come step up?
How close are we to seeing this implemented in, in Indiana?
If you would, please introduce yourself and your title, if you would.
Title?
Title.
Oh, I'm a member of the La Voz Unida.
And your name, please.
Oh, my name is Ed Rodriguez, 11746 Longdale, Plymouth. I think that is proper protocol. So, legislation has been in the works for probably 13 years now. Typically, what happens once it dies in the Senate, then the effort ceases. So, we start up again in January of the following year, and so, true progress has never been made. This year, this past year, Senate Bill 248 actually had nine Republican senators and two Democrat senators. So, it is a very, very strong bipartisan effort now. We have done everything we can to meet with senators, but it's very difficult with their schedule. So, we took a different approach of coming to folks like you, grassroots lawmaking, this is where things really happen, and asked for resolutions. We found that legislators at some point tend to hide behind the word constituents. You know, the constituents are saying this and saying that. But when we come to the leaders, we find that a resolution is a true symbol of the support and advocacy that the city has, recognizing the importance of this. Why has it failed is because the effort ceases once the proposal dies. This year, La Voz Unida has taken on charge, full charge, of going to different cities. Right now, we're looking at Kokomo, we're looking at Anderson, Muncie, Frankfurt. We expect a resolution anytime now. We've been asked to go to Columbus, come down to Washington. We're traveling the entire state, and as Josefa said, these folks, we're their voice. They're in the shadows, they work for us, they work for their families, they're here because they have a need. And at this point, we're here to ask for you to pass this resolution to help them not live in fear of driving. We have met thousands and thousands of families, particularly mothers, who are being pulled over by, by law enforcement and are being handcuffed in front of their children and taken away to jail, simply because they don't have a document and they're driving. They need to drive. In addition, as she pointed out, these folks are not compliant because they've never passed a written exam, they've never passed a, a test with an instructor, all being vetted through the BMV, by the way, which is in full support of this legislation. And more importantly, which I think is the, the component that we all need to recognize, is that they will have to carry full coverage insurance. This will protect all of us. We have seen, the, the state of Utah is really the one that everybody is modeling. The number of, of hit and runs is completely eliminated because these folks have a form of identification through this, and they have full coverage insurance. Indiana State Police is in full favor of this. All local law enforcement officers, chiefs, they all love this. We just can't seem to get past Indianapolis. And this is why we're here, is to, is to ask you for this resolution, because again, this is the symbol that we know is going to make real headway for us. That was a great question. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment on Resolution 23-09. Could I have a sense here in chambers, how many would like to offer public comment? Hands up. I see one. Okay, and Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public joining us electronically that want to comment on this resolution, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar, by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host, and we will recognize you that way.
Great. And for those in chambers who would like to offer comment, please go ahead and start approaching the podium. Mr. Lucas, do we have takers on Zoom?
None at the moment.
Okay. With that, let's begin here in chambers. Welcome. If you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Yoder, and I have the incredible honor of serving you in the Indiana State Senate for Senate District 40, and I'm here and rising in support of, of your approval and support of Resolution 2309. Resolution 2309, it just is a reflection of the amazing work of what we're hearing and what we're seeing today. Over the last 13 years, it has been, the efforts have been somewhat successful, but they were correct that they tend to die in the Indiana State Legislature. But the efforts are bipartisan, and I want to reiterate this. This is not a partisan effort, this is a bipartisan effort. And each year, we get a little closer. And going back to a grassroots effort and taking community by community, city by city, town by town, and asking for the support in these resolutions is a brilliant idea. I commend your work, because I can see how getting, getting bipartisanship support through our communities is the way to get this passed. A resolution that would support driver card legislation makes our roads safer, and it makes good economic sense. Individuals who qualify for a driver's, a driver card are our colleagues, they are our employees, and they pay our taxes. They pay taxes. They are also trying to get to their jobs and trying to get their kids to school. It's the right thing to do, and we can support good public policy by supporting this resolution and doing what we can here in Bloomington to raise awareness, number one, and encourage that kind of dialogue with our legislators across the state of Indiana. And one last thing, if you're sitting there and wondering if the Bloomington City Council does something, what does it harm the efforts that we're seeing here? And I want to say first, no. I think it only encourages greater engagement throughout Indiana on this issue, because as I've said it repeatedly, this is a bipartisan effort, and I think one reason why it fails is people just don't understand it, and education is the way forward. So, please vote in support of this resolution, and I look forward to continue to work with the residents throughout Indiana, making sure this happens to make our streets safer and good economic policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Do we have additional comments here in chambers? Okay. Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Seeing no further comment, we'll close public comment and come back to council for any questions. Councilmember Sims?
No.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, let's go for final comments then. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you, Madam President. Resolution 2309, first of all, I do support it, strongly support it. I think it was important that our friend Senator Yoder let everyone know that what does a, a city council, we do something like this, how does that affect anything up at the State House and beyond? One city council may not as much. There are multiple communities that have done this, and ultimately, and I did hear the word education, ultimately, I think it'll spread and have some impact and influence on our state-elected folks who may not see it the way we do, or the way they should see it. Also, it's a way to educate. That's one of the things is understanding, to clarify what it means. So, that, that's another way to educate the public, in particularly our local public. I'm, I'm going to say this, because normally you norm, you don't, in particular in politics, and I've been taught that you really don't get into religion or spirituality or anything like that. But quickly, I'm going to say this. I am a believer, and I do believe that the good Lord never instilled fear in us. That is not something that we got in that, in that manner. So, a community, a population, people who live in fear from police interactions, from difficulty in accessing food, difficulty in accessing employment, we have to fight that. That is not a natural human tendency, is fear. That is created by external forces that, that are created. So, I'll end this. I'm happy to support this, and thank you all for being here this evening. I think that's important as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims, additional comments? Councilmember Rallo, and then Councilmember Smith.
Well, thank you, and, and I appreciate Mayor Hamilton bringing this forward, and I appreciate you all coming this evening, and I, I wish you luck with other councils around the state. This makes perfect sense to me for the variety of reasons that has have been stated regarding traffic safety, insurance, the economic benefits to make sure that undocumented immigrants can, can, can travel to find work, all the reasons that you need to, to travel or drive, and it's a benefit for law enforcement as well. But it really is a humane policy, it seems to me, to, to allow people to participate in society. So, I'm, I'm very happy that you're working on this, and I wish you luck, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I, I thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks for all, everyone for being here. This is the right thing to do, and it should be just a humane thing to do and make it easier for, you know, our friends in, in the community to be safe and, you know, get the work and take care of their families. So, I'm really happy to support it. I'm glad you're all here. I hope that, you know, the Senator Yoder helps it get over the, the finish line and, and, and it's successful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
There are many reasons why people would be in a place without documentation. That's why the Bureau of the Census doesn't care about the status of a person's documentation of their full rights of citizenship. The Census counts people where they live. It doesn't ask what country they came from. It just asks where they sleep at night now. The term they use is, "Where is your usual residence?" The country is always needed to acknowledge people where they rest their heads. They do it to determine representation in Congress. It's a constitutional mandate. Even if they can't vote, the undocumented are acknowledged as existing by the Census and represented by people on this council, in the county, in the State House, and in Congress. A driving record card is a reasonable accommodation that makes our communities safer, not just for those who would receive the cards, but for all of us. So, I definitely support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? If not, I'll, I'll just finish up with heartfelt thanks for bringing this before this body, and thank you for the educational efforts about what this does and what it doesn't do, because I think both of those are critical. And so, with that, I'll invite our clerk Bolden to call the roll, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Scambaluri?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
That passes eight zero. Thank you. So, please count Bloomington among, in the company of the cities who have already endorsed this. So, thank you all for being with us.
Let's take a moment for the room to clear, perhaps, if anyone wants to.
Okay. We'll see.
Okay.
With that, we can move on to legislation for first readings this evening, so.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2312 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Madam Clerk, will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2312, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 2226, previously amended by Ordinance 2240, which fixes salaries of appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Monroe County, Indiana for the year 2023, regarding to reflect updates needing implementation in 2023. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends Ordinance 2240, which set the maximum 2023 salary for all appointed officers, non-union, and ASME employees for all the departments of the City of Bloomington, Indiana. The amendment reflects changes to job titles, a change to a job grade, and additional full-time employees.
Thank you. We'll take this up next at our regular session one week from this evening on June 14th, so.
Madam President? Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2312 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Will the clerk please read?
I just read the title and synopsis of 2312. Did I have the agenda switched? Yeah, I thought we were doing 2313.
I'm, I beg your pardon. 2313.
Let's just do that again. Second?
Yes, let's.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes. Will the clerk please read?
Yes. Ordinance 2313, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 2225, which fixes salaries of officers of the police and fire departments for the City of Bloomington, Indiana for the year 2023, regarding to reflect increases in compensation to certain firefighters. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends and replaces Ordinance 2225, which set the minimum and maximum salary- rates for all sworn fire and police personnel for the year 2023, in accordance with council-approved collective bargaining agreements, by adding an assistant chief of operations position and amending one other job title within the fire department, and by adding sections 1F retention pay, I'm sorry, IF, IG, Kelly Day vacation buyback, and IH, premium payments for battalion chiefs to the ordinance.
Thank you. This, too, will be taken up next at our regular session one night, one week from tonight on June 14th. Thank you. That takes us to our second of two periods of public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. May I see a show of hands in chambers for who would like to offer public comment? I see one approaching the podium. Mr. Lucas, can you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature, which you can find in your control bar by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. Welcome. If you would state your name for the record, please, and then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. Usually I come up here to talk public policy, advocacy, plug in an election event, but today I bring good tidings from the Chamber of Commerce on our commitment to a better tomorrow. It's important to note the business community's full support for our wonderful two school districts in this county. Both MCCSC and RBB not only educate our youth, but their dedication adds to the quality of life we hold so dear here in Monroe County. The chamber demonstrates this support through the Success School. This entity within the chamber led by Katie Sensibow focuses not only on workforce development and career readiness, but also the importance of helping children grow into the next generation of prepared community members. For almost two decades, the chamber has been convening businesses and schools in our community. We strive to help connect students to industries, companies, and jobs that fuel their desire to learn. The school systems, the teachers they employ, and the students they mold are significant reasons that local companies can recruit talent from right here in our community. The Success School has a array of hands-on programs that include career panels, mock interviews, job shadowing, entrepreneur pitch competition, soft skill workshops, STEM and career fairs, financial literacy modules, tour of opportunity, and our anchor piece, the reality store. This is where every K-12 junior high student navigates the burdens of adulthood as a 28-year-old with a career chosen based on their GPA. Here, they need to obtain the necessary housing, the insurance, healthcare, transportation utilities that we all have to do as adults. Meanwhile, childcare, healthcare expenses, and even divorce room around that corner. To provide you a sense of the Success School impact for 2022-23 school year in our two school districts, we had 559 volunteers for a total of 1,723 hours. Those served were 4,342 students and 52 distinctive events and programs. Our financial literacy program has been active among state legislatures, including our own, and as I see now, 41 other states have taken legislation. It's something we're already doing here in Monroe County. I want to thank all the volunteers who not only dedicated their time, but brought their passion to the classroom each and every time. How can you get involved? Go to chamberbloomington.org/successschool for more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Are there additional commenters here in chambers or on Zoom? Okay. Seeing none, that'll conclude our second period of public comment, and that'll, and let's now take up matters of council's schedule. Mr. Lucas, would you like to walk us through these, or shall I begin with the work session?
Well, if you'd like to mention the work session.
Yeah, let me do that. Members of council, I'm interested in scheduling a work session on Monday, June 12th at noon for the purpose of hearing about and discussing ongoing efforts by the county to advance the Convention Center expansion project. We can do that by motion tonight. May I have a show of hands of those who would be interested in attending? Only two? And I see some.
When is it again?
I'm sorry, Monday, June 12th at noon. So this coming Monday at noon.
Yeah, I can't make it.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Is it Zoom?
Yeah, you can Zoom. Okay, and Zoom is possible as well. I'm sensing enough of an interest that, let's go ahead and schedule that, please. And Mr. Lucas, if you could notice that accordingly. Okay. Next up, we have a budget advance meeting scheduled for June 13th at 6:00 PM in the Allison Conference Room. We have also been invited to a public meeting at that time related to the College Walnut Corridor Study. That'll also be held on June 13th at 6:00 PM. What is the will of the council? Does the council wish to cancel or reschedule the budget advance, or do we wish to continue with the budget advance?
I think.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
It'd be great to reschedule the budget advance.
Okay. Are there other opinions or other comments? Okay, did you, were you wanting to propose a particular date or time, or no? No, not October.
And just to perhaps provide some suggestion, if there's no date picked out currently, a member could move to cancel and reschedule for a later date to be determined. If you'd like to go through the exercise of picking a date now, you could, but I know the mayor's unavailable in the next week or two, so if you'd like to work with the mayor's office and staff to find a new date, that would be fine as well.
Okay. So with that guidance in mind, is there a motion to cancel and potentially reschedule for a future date?
I'll move to cancel budget advance.
For.
And reschedule on a new date that we don't know yet. Yep.
Can I second it?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the budget advance meeting on June 13th at 6:00 PM has been canceled in favor of allowing those who are interested to attend the College Walnut Corridor Study to be held at that same time here in council chambers, I believe?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. And next up, did you want to share the reminder about the PS Lit?
Yes, just for those folks who serve on the PS Lit Committee, we have selected Monday, June 12th at 2:00 PM as the date and time for that committee's first meeting, so we will look forward to getting that group together for the first time this year and going through some changes that we have had to our process through a state bill. So stay tuned for more information there.
Great. Thank you. Just by way of reminder, we have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled to begin at 8:00 PM, so in just about 10 minutes, chaired by Councilmember Volin. Is there any other business before this group for this regular session? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.